Rivero.
Here.
Vineyard.
President.
Price.
Here.
We have a quorum. Mayor, our deputy city attorney, report out from closed session.
Deputy City Attorney, please.
Today, we are reporting out from the closed session that there has been, there have been two title changes to two city employees. Frank Pietro will remain city manager and Sammy Joseph is now the acting police chief. We are also reporting out that Frank Pietro intends to retire as the city manager December 31st, 2016, and direction was given to staff this evening regarding the process for selection of a new city manager to replace Mr. Pietro at his retirement.
Thank you.
Okay. Approval of agenda as posted or as amended?
Are there any items within the agenda that anybody wishes to amend or change in any way, shape, or form? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
So moved, second.
Call for the question.
Rivero.
Yes.
Raymond.
Yes.
Bergman.
Yes.
Vineyard.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Motion carries. Comments from the public. At this time, any person may comment on any item which is not on the agenda. Please state your name and address for the record. Action will not be taken on an item that is not on the agenda. If it requires action, it will be referred to staff and/or placed on a future agenda. To comment on an item that is on the agenda, please wait until the item is read for consideration. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes.
Is there anyone wishing to address the city council at this time? Mr. Reed.
Yes. Adam Reed, 1520 Fruitland Avenue. Is it, I didn't plan to speak on this, but is there, can we comment on, or can I address your closed session, or is that not?
It's your time.
Oh, okay. Well, I know you can't, I can't make any comments on agenda items. Congratulations, Frank, on your retirement, I guess, and thank you for serving the city. I would like to think that it would be prudent of the council to wait until the new council's elected, but that's just my thought, you know, to appoint a new city manager or hire one, but I just want to throw that out there. Also too, what I'm here to talk about, though, is garage sales. It's been a point of contention, the garage sale over on Wenton Way in Heights. There's a continual on just about every first and third weekend of the month. It's continually a garage sale there. And the problem, or I think they're falling within the guidelines somewhat, that they can have it the first and third weekend of the month based in municipal code, but their fence line, from what I can tell, is on the property line, and they're having their garage sale in the city property in the right way. And according to your zoning ordinance, they need an encroachment permit to do that, so I'm just wondering if they've obtained an encroachment permit. So, yeah, it's, there's just always a garage sale there, and it's right up against the road on Heights, so I was just looking to see if the city can maybe take a look at that, so, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Adam. And just as a footnote, I had phone calls on that very same subject, so.
Hi, my name is Lori Johnson. My address is 1675 Drakely Avenue. Good evening, council members. I've come before you twice before, asking the same question, and so far, nothing but silence. And again, I have a right to know the source of the $1,750 cash handed, dropped off at my house by city manager Frank Pietro. Unless Atwater officials are in the habit of conducting city business in cash, I have every justification to be suspicious. I hope the council is skeptical of the outrageous claim that Pietro acted as a courier for some county agency. In order to reimburse me for my loss, in order to reimburse me for my loss, I'm sorry, I'm pretty sure Merced County officials don't hand $1,750 in cash to a city manager so he can jump into his car and drive it to the home of an Atwater city resident. Good government practices require that all payments be made by check, not cash, and the transactions must be memorialized on paper with signatures. Atwater ordinances mandate that the city council is responsible for the actions of the city manager. When there is a question of bad behavior, the council is obligated to perform due diligence and investigate the matter. Mayor Price. From the podium where I am standing, you pointed your finger and asked for transparency in the city government. Now I stand here asking you for the same. So can I, can anyone from the council enlighten me on the source of the cash dropped off at my house? Will I get an answer tonight? It's shameful that you continue to stonewall me. You won't be able to use that tactic on the Merced grand jury.
Anyone else wishing to address the city council? Yes, ma'am.
I have a choir. My name is Bobby Frye. I live at 57 Rancho Grande Parkway in Merced, and I am part of the Rancho Grande Mobile Home Park. In May 2016, Stores Property Management Corporation, owner of the Rancho Grande Senior Mobile Home Park, notified the residents that they would be converting the property to an all-age park. The current owners of the park, in case you didn't get it, are strongly opposed to this change. We're already starting to see changes in our mobile home park as younger people are coming in. We no longer are feeling as safe as we have felt in the past. Many of us have made our lifetime financial decisions based on a covenant agreement from the owners of Rancho Grande Mobile Home Park, that we would be a 55-plus park, and we have no resources to move. Many of these people that you see here today can't move out of the park just because they've decided to change a rule. We know that a protracted legal battle is not in our future. We can't afford it. We can't fight Stores Property Management. They're too deep. Their pockets are too deep, and they have too many resources. We are simply people trying to live on a retirement income. We are going to request that the city of Atwater requests an adoption of an overlay district ordinance for the Rancho Grande Senior Mobile Home Park that would prohibit Stores management from changing our park to an all-age family park. We know that there is case law, and there is our examples. The city of Ucaipa in 2009 was able to pass the same kind of ordinance. It was withheld on appeal by the park owners in Ucaipa in 2012, and we are just asking that the city of Atwater help to protect their senior citizens, their voting senior citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the city council?
Yes, my name is Robert Brea. I live at 89 Rancho Grande Circle. When I moved in there, I was told I had to go through a check state if I was 55 or older at the time. So they told me this was a 55 and older park. There is no place for kids in that park. There's no sidewalks. You have older people driving vehicles. Our reflexes ain't as good as when we were 30 years old, and you're going to have kids running across the street playing balls, because there's no place for them to play. Eventually, one of these kids is going to get hit, get killed, and it's not worth it. There's no place for them to play. There's nothing for the kids to do there. There must be something you can do for us, hopefully. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Protam Bergman.
Thank you. I know typically we'll be to the end of the meeting to ask for certain issues, but I would like to ask that we ask the city manager to look into these laws and see if it is appropriate, that we take action or, as they're wishing, to make, you know, move an ordinance or such. So if we can just ask the city manager to look into that.
It's already being done. I met with the two young ladies a couple of weeks ago. I faxed off the package to Tom, our city attorney. He's reviewing that. He happened to be in Washington. He just got back today, so I will have contact with him tomorrow, and he will contact the group and give them a heads up.
Okay.
So it's already been worked.
Thank you.
Sorry it took so long. He's been out of town, so.
Anyone else wishing to address the city council? Seeing none, move on to the next agenda item.
Consent calendar. Background information has been provided on all matters listed under the consent calendar, and these items are considered to be routine. All items under the consent calendar are normally approved by one motion. If discussion is requested on any item, that item will be removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Are there any items on the consent calendar that a member of the city council would like to remove for separate consideration? Anyone from the audience would like to remove an item for separate consideration? Seeing none? Make a move?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent calendar. Second.
Call for the question.
Bergman.
Yes.
Raymond.
Yes.
Rivero.
Yes.
Vineyard.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Motion carries. City council matters. Discussion and possible action regarding installation of a security wall fencing around police department parking lot.
Council and ladies and gentlemen, I requested this item to be placed on the agenda one more time. Back in, a year ago this past April, I did my first ride along with the Atwater City Police, and just before hitting the streets, I asked a group of three or four officers if there was any items, you know, that they would like to discuss before hitting the streets, because I couldn't guarantee I'd see them later on that day. Whoops, I'm sorry. Mr. Vineyard.
No, go ahead. Finish what you're doing. Come here.
Okay. In any case, the first thing that I was hit with, probably the most forceful thing of that particular ride along, was securing the back entrance to the police parking area. The words used to me were, "When are we going to get a wall up here before we get assassinated going out into the parking lot?" That was a pretty powerful statement, and I told them that I would do what I could do as far as bringing it to the council and seeing what we could do to, in fact, close that section of the parking area off from any bad guys that may decide that they'd like to do harm to one of our cops. So, some time has gone by. We've brought this to the council a couple of times, but now in light of incidents that have happened in Dallas, Baton Rouge, Louisiana, another incident down in San Diego, I feel that it is extremely important that we address this issue and make sure that the statistics are not going to include an Atwater cop. So that's why it's back here this evening and see if we can find resolution to this. Mr. Pietro, do you have information that, to this?
Yeah. A year ago, we, there was a, a committee was set up. It was two council members, the APOA president and another member. Obviously, that didn't happen at the time. It's very, very important that we get some type of security back there now, especially what's going on. I've instructed our Public Works Director, Intervent Public Works Director, Patrick Ferretta, to provide you guys with some initial estimates. If you remember correctly, when we did it back a year, it was like $100,000. We were going out all the way to Village Circle and doing the entire parking lot. Well, these estimates are only going to be to cut off the parking lot where the police cars are and their private vehicles. So with that, Patrick, if you will, please get up and give us some bids.
Thank you, city manager Pietro, mayor Price, and members of the city council. Approximately two weeks ago, the city manager asked me to see if I could get some estimates for some security fencing behind city hall. As the city manager explained, what he asked me to do is provide a wrought iron fence that would be approximately 72 feet in length. It would begin at the southeast corner of the city hall building and be constructed all the way to just south of the motorcycle shed in back of city hall. The fence would be seven feet high. It would contain a 20-foot rolling gate, similar to the one on the north entrance of the parking lot, but also contain a 50-inch pedestrian walk-through gate with all the correct ADA hardware on it, as well as that little section in the planter area where the maple trees are. It would close that up as well. And unfortunately, I did contact several fencing companies, and only three of them were able to provide quotes, reasons being others didn't is some don't do prevailing wage jobs, some are just doing strictly residential, and others just flat out didn't return my phone call. But however, the quotes that I did receive back, the quotes ranged from approximately $24,000 up to $35,000. And I think after looking at them all, looking at the differences, some included supplying the power, others thought the city were going to do it. Unfortunately, we didn't have some specifications or have time to write exact specifications for this, so I'm not sure all the quotes reflect an apples-to-apples comparison, but if we have some time, we could probably, now that I'm looking at these quotes and kind of maybe getting some feedback from you folks in terms of how the level of strength or security that you'd like to see out there, we could maybe ask them to resubmit something and maybe get a better number on that. So I'm here to answer any questions if you have any of that specific project.
Are there any, Mr. Vineyard?
Yeah. Are any of these along the lines of the three drawings or the three designs that I provided back at the first, after the first of the meetings that we had?
Unfortunately, I never saw any of those.
Okay. Well, actually, I mean, obviously, I want the most secure that we can do with our police officers, and to me, it's, I just think it's kind of ridiculous it took us this long to get to this stage. So obviously, I know the officers know what they need, and I've talked to the officers numerous occasions. Personally, what I want to do is just make a motion that we bypass the normal bid process and go to an emergency purchase, not to exceed $30,000, and become effective immediately starting tomorrow and get this done.
Mr. Bergman.
Well, before I go on with my comments, I'll second that motion. This last week, I had the pleasure of attending Atwater Police Officers Association meeting, so I had the majority of the officers there. So I asked them point-blank what they want. They want security, but they want privacy. Wrought iron is great, but they feel safer with something that is a little more obscure, whether it was a chain link with the security slats or what it is. They want security. They want to be hidden from the public. So that's something we need to look at, but it needs to be done, as Councilman Vineyard said, it needs to be done now. With the travesties that have been going on throughout the country, with the rumors that they're looking at starting to hit small cities, we can't afford to leave our officers open and leave them as targets. We need this done now, but we need the security. So whatever we do, we need security, whether it's some type of metal covering the fences you're talking about, we need to throw that in as well.
Would, to answer your question maybe, or to get clarification, would wrought iron fencing with some type of a mesh welded to the pickets work, or are you looking at more of a lock wall type?
Something similar to what you see on these security screen doors, where it's kind of a metal with the small holes that really breaks up the view. Something similar to that is what they were good with if it was wrought iron.
Okay.
And again, they said they were good with chain link if it had the security in it. Their concern is the view.
I think also, I didn't mention this, but at the top of the seven foot of the fence all the way across, there'll be some curved pickets with, so it kind of prevents people from climbing over the top of it. And they'll have some ornamental spikes on top of those, each of the pickets as well.
Okay. And like I said, we did have, we originally had a committee set up. If we can keep that same committee, maybe we can look at the bids you get in, and we can make a decision ASAP, if that meets the approval of the other council members.
I share everybody's concern. My only thought on it was something that could be ballistically set, so that, you know, you're not going to, you know, some idiot out there in the park doesn't get off around in the dark through there. That's my concern. I don't know what can be done with that sort of thing, but, you know, if you close off the slats in between so that, you know, somebody can't be seen, maybe that's...
Yeah, I think we can maybe do that, but making it entirely bulletproof, I don't really know what can be done with that, if that's what you're saying.
Yeah. Mr. Pietro.
I don't want to, I hate this term, kick this can down the road again, but we need to make some type of decision so we can jump on this. If the committee is still going to be in effect, then let Patrick go out. We can put mesh up against the fence. I know a couple of people here that have done that in welding. We could do it ourselves. Let's just get the fence built. Let's provide the security. So if we could still have that same committee, Patrick and I can meet with that committee along with the association president or representative from the association and get this thing done. It's way overdue.
Yep. Are there any members of the audience wishing to address this matter?
Jean, I am 3218 North York Road, Atwater. Chain link fence wouldn't be good, because we've had so many people just cut right up the links, and then they go. And also, how about donations? Anybody think of those, or yay?
We could take donations, yeah. We love money here.
Listen to this and see where this gets me. What if I put some dumpsters in the city of Atwater and donated all the money to you? Is that legal or no? Not?
Genie, genie, genie.
Hey, you're leaving! What do you expect? Got to get my last, just think about it.
Actually, mayor, I do have some information on that.
Mr. Bergman.
I met with Mr. Creighton last week. We had lunch. We discussed about this, discussed this issue, and he and I both, we checked to make sure it was proper. He and I both have been talking to different businesses as far as donating funds, donating manpower to put it up, and we are in the process, and we do have some businesses we have been contacting that are looking at donating one way or the other. So this cost may not be borne completely on the city. So it is in the process.
Good. Mr. Vineyard?
I just don't want to see this process go beyond this month.
Agreed. I agree. Yeah, I too agree with you on a sole source provider. If that's the route we got to go, then that's the route we're going to go and get this over and done with. Go ahead, Linda.
Hi, Linda Dash, Atwater. I'd be willing to make the first donation, and I know this money is, I don't know where you're bringing it from, but it's something you could probably use for something else, but maybe we could offset what you are putting out. Maybe you could front us some money, in other words, and then we'll go out and hit up some of the merchants and some of the folks that our police officers protect, and maybe we come your doors and a dollar, $2, $5, and see what we can do. But if you could front us some money, then we'll hit up some of the high rollers.
Okay.
Hi, Lori Chavez, 75 Rancho Grande. Why don't we do the boots like they do in the fire department down in Fresno on the corners to raise money for our fence in the back? I don't know, that would be fun, I think, out there on the corners, meeting the public, getting money for the fence. Might work, I don't know. It's an idea.
I don't think the police officer's boots are that big.
Mr. Vineyard. Detective Vera.
Good afternoon, council members of the community. Thank you for having me here today. My name is Matt Vera. I'm a detective with the Atwater City Police Department, and I'm also a board member of our APOA. I kind of had a long spiel planned out to try to sell this, but I want to thank you guys first and foremost for taking a proactive role. It's greatly appreciated. We're not looking for anything fancy, and we're not ignorant to the fact that we know that there's no way to eliminate a threat. A motivated person is going to find a means to, for a potential attack. All that we're asking for is limiting that when we take that transition from our personal vehicles to our police department. There's always going to be an inherent threat when we log on, we're aware of that, but limiting that from when we haven't even logged on from the police department to our personal vehicles would be greatly appreciated. Again, we did talk to Councilman Larry Bergman about this issue, and we said we feel the financial restraints at the police department as much as anybody else. The last thing we're trying to do is burden the city. So the best bang for our buck, definitely look to, we're definitely not asking for a bulletproof wall around our police department. Anybody motivated, we'll just wait for you to get outside the bulletproof wall if they're taking that action, but again, limiting that when we're at our most vulnerable state is greatly appreciated. So thank you, members of the community and the city council, for hearing what we had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Is there anyone else wishing to address this matter? Well, I couldn't agree with Detective Vera anymore. I don't want to put a dollar value on a cop's life, not for a second, so, okay. If there's, are there any other further discussion? Have a motion and a second on the floor? Call for the question.
Vineyard.
Yes.
Bergman.
Yes.
Rivero.
Yes.
Raymond.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Hallelujah. Mr. Pietro.
So mayor, are we going to keep the same committee, Mayor Protam and Councilman Vineyard, so we know who to meet with? Is that the council direction?
Yeah, we could do that.
I'd like to give an alternate, just in case, due to the events that I've been having, is Councilman Raymond.
Thank you.
City council comments and request for future agenda items.
Mr. Vineyard, welcome home.
Thank you. Thank you. I want to thank everybody for all your prayers and all your kind words for the issues I've been facing. Still got some work ahead. Hopefully, I'll be back at the next council meeting. I don't have anything for the next agenda at this time, but thank you very much.
Mr. Rivero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to remind everybody that beginning next week, school will be in session. There's going to be a lot of kids out there, some of them new to, on their walks to school, so please, please drive slowly, especially down Main Thoroughfares. I know that people are late for work sometime, and please take your time and watch for the little ones, because a lot of them, like I said, are new to going to school, and I don't want to see any accidents. I'm not sure that no one out there wants to have one too, so, so God willing, we'll have a good school year, and it'll be a safe school year. Thank you.
Mr. Raymond.
First, the only thing I really have here is today's the birthday of one of the greatest men I've ever met, so happy birthday, Dad.
Mr. Bergman.
I too wish Mike a happy birthday. Well, I would like to thank Frank Pietro for his many years of service as a police officer working his way up through to chief. I know this is a tough time for Frank. He's given his all for this city for many years, and it doesn't go unnoticed. And then I'd like to... And then I'd like to congratulate our new chief, Joseph, for stepping up. Sammy's got a lot of years in this department, and I know he will do us well. We do some big changes, and I know they're gonna work out. I'm very thankful for Mrs. Dash, Mama Dash, for standing up and making a donation. If there are any out there that would like to make a donation towards this worthwhile as it, it needs to be done. We need to protect the boys, protect us. I'd be willing to take the calls if anybody has any, and I'll help line things up and get it set. So thank you very much.
Absolutely. I too want to thank Frank for his many years as a police officer in this city, and you know, to stay the years that you have, you know, homegrown guy here, and that says a hell of a lot. And I, for one, am extremely proud to have you here at my side. We had a chamber coffee this last Wednesday over at the community center. It was hosted by Pastor Jeff Leese in the Yosemite Church, and if anybody wants to go over and take a look at what they have done to the community, Senator, it is beyond belief what they have done. They sunk some serious dollars into the place, and I tell you, this is a great move, and they put on a really nice coffee for us, put in all-new hardwood flooring throughout, new sound system. It's just incredible what they've done. And if they're watching, or if any member of the church is watching this evening, please convey to all those responsible our heartfelt thanks. That's really looking good over there. If you have a moment, please go by the community center and take a look at what they've done. Yesterday was National Purple Heart Day, for those that didn't know, and I just want to say for all the veterans that are still with us that have earned that particular honor, that we appreciate your service to the country, and for those that have passed on, God holding you in His hands. At this time, I'd like to turn over to Councilmember Raymond for an acknowledgement and a adjournment.
So last week, the world lost a great young man, twenty-eight years old, Vincent Holland, July thirtieth to be exact. He was a great kid, graduated Buick High School two thousand and six. All he wanted to do was serve his community, and he did that through service, and went to the police academy and was in the process of getting a job as a, you know, peace officer somewhere in the state, but he also applied here. His goal was to be in Atwater, and Vincent will be missed.
And in Vincent's memory, we will adjourn this meeting.